Commissioner K. Seven.
I'm here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here. Did you hear me?
President. President, Commissioner Whitehurst, thank you.
Thank you, Doring. Okay, so next item, do we have any communications last week? I see none. Okay, so that's considered a minute that Doring circulated yesterday. Do we have any corrections, deletion, additions, any comments? No, okay. Thank you, Doring, for getting that to us so quickly. It's a long minute, so we appreciate that, and I will sign that in.
Long meeting.
Yeah, I will sign it and I'll email it to you. Okay. Thank you. So today, we don't have any public meetings, so we can relax a little bit. We have two briefings. The first one is from Senior Planner Susan Shanks, and she's going to talk about Washington Square update. And if you have any questions for Susan, please use your raise hand buttons, and she will get to you when she's ready. So, thank you, Susan, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Hu, and hello to all the commissioners. I actually don't know all of you. I hope to this year meet all of you in person. I do know many of you, but I don't know all of you. So just to introduce myself, I'm a senior planner with the city of Tigard. I've been with Tigard a little over seven years, and I mostly work on long-range planning projects. And I'm here tonight to give you a briefing on the current project I'm working on, which is the Washington Square Regional Center update. And I'm going to share my screen and take you through my presentation, but this is a briefing, so it's very informal. So please pipe up if you have any questions along the way, I'm more than happy to answer them. And unfortunately, when I share my screen, I can't see you. I can't see you when you raise your hand, unfortunately, even though President Hu suggested that. If you actually just could speak up, and I also do my best to pause a lot in between and ask if you have any questions along the way. So just please speak up, happy to be interrupted as I go through this presentation, because there is a lot of material here. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Great, well, let me, let me share my screen. Everybody see my screen?
Yes, like, yeah.
Yeah, I get a blank, I got an SS and then a blank, black screen. Normally getting.
I can see it just fine, and I can see it.
I can see it.
So we had actually, when I was presenting to City Council recently, the mayor was able to see my screen, but then he wasn't able to see the slides advance. So we ended up just sending him the presentation so he could follow along on his own. So I know sometimes, for some reason, the share screen function doesn't work for everybody, like, everybody doesn't see it or see it in the same way. So I think I heard one person say they couldn't see it. If that's the case, maybe.
Yeah, I think that was, that was Commissioner Roberts. Do you want me to go ahead and send your PowerPoint to him?
Yeah. I don't have any other ideas, I don't know if IT has any ideas about how, how to remedy that for him.
We'll just, we'll make sure he gets the slides afterwards.
Okay. Commissioner Roberts logged in, so I don't know if that helped him or not. He didn't speak up about it. Okay, well, I'm going to start. I hope everybody can see it, except, except maybe it sounds like some Commissioner Roberts can't see it yet. But so this is my third briefing on this project, and even, and for those of you who are new, I am going to do some high-level overview of the project, because I know you're not familiar with it, even though I've come to the Planning Commission now for the, this third time. So definitely, please ask questions along the way. So this is a long-range planning project, it's grant-funded by Metro. The city is also contributing some funds as well. And it's, the project overall is taking about two years to complete, and we're kind of right in the middle of that, and I'll show you a schedule just in a little bit. But the goal of this project is to work with our project partners and with the community. And what we're doing here is working on refining the vision, the land use and transportation vision for the Washington Square Regional Center area. There was a plan put in place and zoning and regulations put in place 20 years ago. And that's usually how long a long-range planning project is kind of good for. And so this is really just the perfect time to go back in and evaluate that original vision and the kinds of regulations we have in place, to make sure it's actually, it's still keeping in line with cities' goals, with the communities' goals, and doing what it should be doing. So this is really a refinement project, we're not starting over from scratch. You'll be hearing from Skylar Warren later this evening on his briefing where he's really, he's working on a project where it's, he's really kind of starting from scratch. And this is not that project, the Washington Square Regional Center area is very developed and has been that way for quite some time. But our goal here is to really take another look and fine-tune things in hopes of facilitating more housing, transportation, and business employment options for the area that are consistent with Tigard's strategic vision. And of course, as you all probably know, that, that vision is to be walkable, healthy, and inclusive. So here's our project schedule, I don't expect you to read everything on this page. This is mostly to say, we are in the middle of this project. That dash line down the middle is kind of indicating where we're at. We've done a lot of technical analysis, we've done some community engagement. And we're just at the point where we're taking all that analysis and what we've heard from the community, and we're working on developing what we're calling land use and transportation choices. And that's what you're going to hear about me talking tonight, as well as some of the analysis that we've done.
Susan?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt.
Sure, no, no, no.
This is K. Seven. Is there a way you could go into presentation mode, then it's easier to read?
To present, I am in presentation.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Small, alright, I'll focus around on my side, don't worry, keep going.
Susan, you're, you're, hit F. 11 on your, on your window right now.
I did?
Alright, see that little dropdown, that's the gray dropdown on the top?
The gray dropdown?
It's, move your mouse over in the middle.
That one?
No, in the middle.
Oh, in the middle, yeah, uh-huh.
And then click on that.
Okay.
And then see those arrows that expand out?
That one? Ah, ooh.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, that's a great tip, I did not know that, is, is that better?
Very much, thank you, thank you very much.
Perfect. And this side actually does have a lot of small text on it, so other slides, the text will be larger. Like I said, I didn't necessarily want you to read everything on here, but just to show you that we're kind of in the middle of this project. And I'll be talking more at the end of this presentation about next steps and when you might expect to have me come before you again. So we are working with a stakeholder working group, it's a very diverse and large group, and they're helping us guide the project. It's composed of community members, as well as community organizations, city and county staff, TRIMET, ODOT, and Metro staff. And that's in part because the regional center actually is not just in Tigard, it's also in Beaverton, and it's in Washington County. We have a consultant team, as well as we're also working with business owners and operators, since this area has a lot of businesses. And I'll just want to make a shout-out to Commissioner Jamie Watson, she's actually a member of our stakeholder working group. So she's also a good resource if you have questions on the project. We have a very large and diverse and very talented consultant team, and I just want to call out that we're working with Verde. They're down here in the lower right-hand corner, they're a community-based organization, and they're really helping us reach out to, to community members that generally are underrepresented in the planning process. So they're working, helping us reach out to the Spanish-speaking community, as well as the Swahili-speaking community, and English-speaking community who are actually part of the hockey community organization. So what I want to talk with you about tonight is, kind of just summarize for you, are both our community engagement efforts to date, as well as some technical analysis, and then really talk about our preliminary findings, what we're finding out here, both based on what we're hearing and what we're learning, as well as beginning to talk to you about the kinds of land use and transportation choices that we're developing to actually put out to the community more, much more broadly than we already have. But we're planning on doing a big community outreach in March and April to hear back from folks about what land use and transportation choices make sense for them in this area. So for community engagement, we actually really were able to not only conduct interviews like by staff and by both Verde staff as well as city staff, but we really reached out to the community using our stakeholder working group members. So they actually conducted their own interviews of people in their network, and those interviews were conducted in English, Spanish, and Swahili. And that there was a mix of about 62% of those people who were interviewed were renters, and 38% were owners in the area. And this actually is very much in keeping with the rent, renter and owner mix that is representative of this area, which is not necessarily representative of Tigard as a whole, but it's representative of this area. We actually also have an online survey, and we recently posted it again through one of the city's newsletters. And we now have actually 42 surveys completed, up from 26 when I originally actually wrote this slide. And most of those people live or work here, others shop here, and most of the survey respondents identify as white. I think probably our interviews were probably a much more diverse group than those people who took our survey. And what we were asking is just generally what folks like about this area and what they want to see change or get better. We got a lot of great responses, in general, people think this is a great place to live, it's a great location, it's a great family neighborhood. What people wanted to see change or get better, they wanted to see better, safer, better and safer walking and biking, more housing options, more culturally diverse business options, and more green space and community recreation center opportunities. So that's what we heard from the community, just at a very high level. And, and, and when I get into the different sub-areas I'm going to talk about, you're going to hear me more, hear more about what the community said about very specific areas. But I just want to briefly go over at a very high level what the technical analysis, what kind of technical analysis we've done, as well as a coordination with some partner agencies, just to give you a flavor of all the work we've done. So we've actually done a lot of analysis, both market analysis and feasibility analysis of different types and scales of development to understand what we might see in this area in the future, just based on what the market is showing us, which in this day and age is really difficult to predict, but, but it's still helpful. We actually evaluated what kinds of development and uses were non-conforming in the area, that's always a helpful thing to know. We reviewed the zoning code for barriers, and we actually also worked very directly with both TRIMET, our transit provider, obviously in the region, as well as the mall owner, which is Mace Ridge, to understand the transit-oriented development opportunities on the mall site, which is where there is a current transit center right now. And then we've been coordinating with many agencies, like I said, this is a multi-jurisdictional area, and there's many road authorities in the area as well. So lots of coordination going on. What we've learned through our analysis is that there's a demand for new construction for some things, but not everything. So there's a demand for new construction for all kinds of housing, and you'll see that on the left-hand side of your screen. There's also a demand for car dealerships in very, in very specific locations. And that there's less of a demand for new development, whether it's small offices, certainly even less demand for retail and larger offices. And there's not a new, really any new demand for flex or light industrial space, just mostly because there's not the space for that, those kinds of larger buildings in this area, since it's mostly developed. And then in terms of development feasible, feasibility, in terms of what's possible, based on kind of the financial aspect of building, whether it's housing or mixed-use or office, similar to where the demand is, it's actually also financially feasible for residential development to happen of many different kinds. And row houses, apartments, even single detached houses. And there's somewhat of a match for, of a, sorry, it's somewhat feasible for residential mixed-use developments to occur here. But there's definitely less feasibility for building, office buildings of different sizes, whether they're small, two or three-story, or very large at eight-plus story, that those kinds of developments are much less feasible here. So it's much less likely that we're going to see that kind of development happening in this area in the near future. And I just want to show you this one graphic that I know is probably very difficult to understand on its own.
Susan? Susan, sorry to interrupt, this is K. Seven.
Sure, no, no.
So in the previous slide, when you say feasible, is it not enough space? Or is it from a business perspective? For example, we have the Lincoln Center, right? Is it fully occupied now? So if we build another one, will we have enough clientele to occupy it? Is that what you mean by feasibility, or it's just that the physical area doesn't allow you to build such a tall eight-plus-story building?
Thank you for that question, that's really good. Feasibility here means if a, if a person or developer bought or, or had a piece of property, and they wanted to develop it with something, and they looked at developing, let's say, taking from this example, a five-to-seven-story office building with structured parking, they would actually run the financials on that. And what they'd learn in terms of how much parking they'd have to provide based on our current regulations, taking into account what it costs, you know, construction-wise, so building materials, what it costs to build something these days. And obviously, the taller you go, the more expensive it becomes, because just different types of construction cost more to build. Usually, the higher up you go, and you start using steel, it's much more expensive than building with wood. So this is all from a financial perspective. So it's not having to do with, is, is the piece of property the right size? Well, that's always a consideration in terms of what you're building, but it's really more about the numbers. And so what this is showing is that based on what our regulations are, what the market will support, the cost of construction, is this actually feasible to build? Does it actually, you know, on the bottom, you know, the bottom line, does it make sense for somebody to try to build something like this? And, and have somebody finance it? And so for the office structures, the answer is more likely no. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So all this graphic is trying to tell you is kind of a snapshot, a graphic snapshot of how much non-conforming development and non-conforming uses are in this area. And what this graphic is actually showing you is that there's a lot. So the green checkmarks mean that those particular areas, of those seven areas that are lifted on the left-hand side, that there's, you know, kind of generally conforming development for those five green checkmarks. The red Xs and the black hourglasses, the black hourglasses indicate just partial conformance. So basically, we have many different areas in this bigger regional center area that either are, have a lot of non-conforming development, or only partially conforming development, and very little that actually is conforming. So I just wanted to give you that snapshot, because it does play into, as we look about changing regulations, we want to know what's already non-conforming, because when we change regulations, sometimes it makes things more non-conforming, sometimes it allows us to bring non-conforming development into conformance. So it's just something we always look at as we're thinking about and evaluating whether or not we should change our regulations. And in this particular area, we have a lot of non-conforming uses and development. So before I go on to the key findings and choices by sub-area, does anybody have any questions about anything I've said so far?
Susan, this is, I just want to quickly, I, I just Googled the regional center boundary map, because I don't live and breathe this every day. So, so if anybody is interested, it's south of Hall and, and west of 217 as well.
I, yeah, I, that is a very, very good point, I am so sorry. Even though, yeah, like I was saying, this is my third briefing of the group, you're absolutely right, I should have told you where the regional center is. I kind of described how multi-jurisdictional it is, but this map will give you some idea, and then there'll be other maps actually in further slides. But just to build on what President Hu just said, the regional center is bisected by Highway 217. So if you can see my cursor, it kind of goes right down the middle of the regional center, like that. Hall Boulevard goes along the eastern edge, and then it turns west and kind of goes out towards the west, that's Hall Boulevard. And then Greenberg Road also runs right through the regional center, it goes right up here, and then it turns into Olson Road. And so the mall is on one side of Greenberg Road, and as already noted, Lincoln Center is on the other side of Greenberg Road. And then we have this other area over here that is off Greenberg Road and Cascade that feeds this area in here called T. Two, it's kind of purplish. You can only get over to this area, which actually is all development off of Nimbus. You can only get there from going, by going up to Shoals Ferry. And then this area up here, these areas that are not circled or identified, these areas are in Beaverton. So while we did analysis that incorporated those areas, our focus going forward is more going to be, is going to be on the areas under Tigard's authority or future authority. So these are the three sub-areas that I'm actually going to be focused on, what I'm calling the Nimbus Cascade area, which is the area over here to the left, and that's between the Phantom Creek Trail, it's bisected by a heavy rail line, and then the edge is Highway 217. And then we're going to talk about the mall area, kind of in the middle, this red area. And then I'm going to talk about this area that's mostly yellow, that is what we're calling the Metzger area. It's very mixed in terms of the kind of development it has, it has a lot of residential, but on the edges, it has businesses on Greenberg and on Hall. So I hope that helps people orient themselves to the area.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. That was a really good call. So I am going to be talking, yeah, about basically what we found and the kinds of choices that we're developing to bring out to the community. And what I'll be doing is definitely letting you know when we are going to be launching our big community engagement effort, because I invite you all to participate in that. It will be definitely a lot of information, very graphic, not necessarily graphics like this, it's going to be much nicer, much prettier than this is. But it's going to help explain the whole story of the regional center, and then it's going to be asking very specific questions of the community. And I'm going to give you a flavor of that tonight at a really high level. So, moving on, I'm going to go through the sub-areas one by one, and I'm going to start with the Metzger sub-area. So this is that area on the right-hand side that is bounded by Hall and then Greenberg and Highway 217 that is primarily residential, but it has, of course, a lot of business development on, on Greenberg, as well as a little bit on Hall. But what we heard from folks about this area is that they really wanted to see more affordable and more family housing options, and not just apartments. They want to see more green space, better access to parks and trails. And they, they actually really appreciate the neighborhood diversity, and they want to see more business diversity. And so what we have found about this area, and this is just an aerial photo, kind of give you a view, an aerial view of the kind of, the scale and type of development in this area, in the middle primarily being single detached homes. Down here, we have a large new apartment complex. And then over on Greenberg Road, as you can see, we have a lot of larger buildings and lots of different kinds of businesses, as well as the Lincoln Center. We also have Metzger Elementary School in the middle. And so, you know, what we've learned is that in this area, there's a really strong potential for more residential infill housing. So we're going to be looking at our regulations to figure out what, if anything, we should be doing or could be doing to help that along in, and really kind of meet that community desire and regional need for more diverse housing options. We also learned that the businesses along Greenberg Road, they do a pretty good job at buffering the residential area from the traffic on Greenberg. And we also learned that this area lacks a lot of things, specifically, ped connections and ped and bike infrastructure, usable open space, because this space down at the bottom is actually wetlands, and it's all private. So it doesn't have a lot of usable open space, and it doesn't really have great access to either Metzger Park, which is over here in the upper right-hand corner, doesn't have great access across Greenberg Road to the mall, and it doesn't have great access to trails, which are like, and there's a, you know, trail, you know, Phantom Creek is all the way over across Highway 217. So that's what we're learning, and so those are the kinds of things that we're going to be addressing in our, in the recommendations that we eventually make as part of this legislative project. This is showing the same area, but with the zoning map. And one of the things that you'll probably see when we come back to you eventually with the legislative package of recommendations is that we want to simplify the zoning in this area and possibly switch up some of the zone boundaries. We don't think they quite make sense for what's going on here, so you're going to hear more about that later. And this is again the same area, but showing you slightly different things. The, the homes, the like, the icons that are houses, this is kind of showing where we think there's actually really great potential for more infill housing of a variety of types, so missing middle housing, maybe some smaller, you know, apartments. And again, we're going to take a good look at our code to make sure that there is no barriers to that kind of development happening. We're also going to be looking at access across Greenberg Road to the mall area and other businesses, across Hall Boulevard to Metzger Park. And then we're looking at the possibility of going across Highway 217 at this location, because one of this, you know, this area really lacks access to a lot of good things just on the edges of the area. So for the mall, and actually, maybe let me just stop there, does anybody have any questions about the Metzger area?
Yes, this is one, one, one small clarification. So one of the inputs you showed for Metzger seemed to indicate diversity of businesses, right? So if you, if you take Lincoln Center, for example, just as an example, there are only two restaurants there, and they may not be, be, you know, affordable for all the Democrat, or people working if they want to get a quick bite, that may not be the right thing. Is there, was there any feasibility done to add more businesses, eateries, and other shops kind of a thing in the Lincoln area? Or is that not a good thing to think about at this point in time?
No, that's, it's, that's a great thing to think about, and actually, business diversity is a challenging thing as, as planners and as, as a city in terms of what we can do. So we can, we, we regulate, and we regulate by using our zoning code, well, zones, as well as our development code. And so we can allow and prohibit different kinds of uses, like restaurants, for example. But it's much harder for us to disallow. But it's much harder for us to disallow certain kinds of restaurants or to allow certain kinds of restaurants. Um for example, you know, there was definitely um and there still probably is strong feeling about chain restaurants um or chain coffee shops like Starbucks, where some people are saying, I don't want a corporate, you know, coffee shop. I want a local mom and pop coffee shop. That's really difficult for us to regulate. We can only say a coffee shop is allowed. We can't say, yeah, and I don't want it to be a Starbucks. So that's tricky. There are some other things to do. It's more in the realm of our economic development program. And I definitely am working with our economic development manager. And we we would like to see more culturally diverse businesses in this area, and there actually are other areas where we can support that. Um uh and I can talk about that in a little bit, but in the Lincoln Center, to your specific question, that's not exactly what we can do with our zoning and our development code.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions about Metzger? Okay, moving on. So the mall, um we're just calling it the mall. Obviously, there's more than just the mall. There's Target. Um there's uh Les Schwab, uh there's other things, but you know, that area is definitely known for being the Washington Square Mall. And what people said is that they really like the mall. It's very convenient for shopping. It's family friendly, but they would like better access to transit. Um the Transit Center is very disconnected from the park and ride, and it's in the middle of a sea of parking. Uh they do want to see more stores and green space and less asphalt. Certainly, the mall and that whole area, there's a lot of asphalt. Um and they wanted to see more pedestrian connections to the mall from the neighborhood. So we're definitely gonna be looking at um better ways to cross um Greenberg Road and perhaps even developing a new cross-section for that that's more conducive for pedestrian crossings. So what have we learned about the mall? What have we found out? So um unlike Metzger, um that is um actually also zoned for mixed-use development, vertical mixed-use development. We're not necessarily seeing the demand for mixed-use vertical development over in the Metzger area. We are seeing that the mall has great potential for really dense, vertical, walkable, transit-oriented, mixed-use development. And they're actually already studying to move in that direction with the Sears redevelopment project that that many of you uh actually reviewed as a planned um development. Um so you might be familiar with that, and I'm gonna show you some images just in a little bit. But this is where of the whole regional center, that there's kind of the the greatest potential for real transformative change. Um but as I noted here on this slide and the second bullet point, but the stakes are pretty high. That's, you know, for this area to transform is gonna take a lot of private investment by the mall owner, a lot. And um and the market is pretty unpredictable right now. I mean, even before COVID, the retail market was becoming unpredictable. You know, with e-commerce and many other factors at play, and so um so anyway, we're we're definitely aware of that. Um and there's gonna be some community questions about that. Um and similar to Metzger, what we've also learned is this area also, I mean, when you're not inside the mall, when you're outside the mall, this area is really designed for cars. It's not designed for pedestrians. So for this area to be like to transform in a way that the community wants to see it transform definitely means that it needs a lot more pedestrian infrastructure and connections and and just needs to be designed better for pedestrians.
Question?
Sure.
When we talk about pedestrians as opposed to asphalt, i- is there an image we can look at? For example, another example, like like a Bridgeport or or are there other things that that we may be able to relate to that could paint the picture of what that might look like?
Yeah, and that's actually a really good um point. Um and when we actually, uh as we start to develop um more materials, more graphic information for the community, that definitely could be one thing that we're working on showing. I mean, it's it's a little bit challenging. Um we have to be very careful about what we show on this property because it's a very uh visible property and it's not ours, you know, it's it's not owned by the city. And so um for example, May Search, the mall owner, they're in the process right now of doing some master planning for uh this northern area up here. And so um, you know, we don't want to show something that's gonna be completely different what what they end up planning to do. That'll give the, you know, the community a a false uh expectation about the area. So we're working with them as closely as we can to be able to show the community to give them a good idea to exactly to your point about what it means for this area to transform. Uh definitely, we're gonna point to what they did with the Sears redevelopment, and I'll show you an image of that in a second. Um but we we are trying to figure out how best to show um what this area could be so that the community has, does get that flavor of the kind of transformation that's possible. But it's tricky um because the mall is actually working on that right now.
I get it.
And but we are actually looking and going to be asking them about other malls that have actually gone through a transformation so we can maybe point to something that might be similar to. So we'll probably take that route, um and we haven't identified those kind of examples yet. Um we know of some, but I haven't run them by the mall yet. Um but we also might even create our own graphics. Um so I'm sorry, I don't have something for you right now, but that's something that we're definitely developing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, because I think it's it's super important. People need to be able to understand what we what we mean when we talk about, you know, great transformation.
Susan?
Yep.
It's Jamie.
Hi, Jamie.
Or Commissioner Watson, whatever I'm called. Um the the parking lot um improvements is this things like um stormwater uh planters and and trees and and that sort of thing, and it's probably driven somewhat by projects. So as the as the mall um renovates or builds additions, that they would have to um likely upgrade their parking, the existing parking as they go. Is that how this would run?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I have a really fun and interesting slide to show you on in that regard in a little bit. Um yes, absolutely, uh similar to what the mall did for the Sears redevelopment, and I'm gonna get to that slide. So we just have something to look at, a little bit more interesting in all the gray. So um on the left is um is the site of the current site of the existing Sears building, which is that white rooftop building. And then this is actually their, what they got planning, commission, approval for to do last year. And it's unfortunately, they would have been on construct, under construction but for COVID. So you can kind of see there's a lot more green, or maybe you can kind of see um on the right-hand side, you know, along the street connections that they're making, there's a lot more green because they have to implement our street standards, which we call call for street trees. Um and um and they're actually doing all structured parking, so they're not even doing surface parking in this new redevelopment effort. And of course, that's the direction we hope they continue to take, is to get away from the surface parking lots and to go vertical. Um and then there's a stormwater piece that I'm excited to share with you, although it's kind of a long shot. But uh just moving on from this, just that maybe gives you a little bit of idea of the direction they're moving. And then this is a kind of a thought experiment we did with them as we were working both with TriMet and with the mall. So on the left-hand side is the mall, an aerial view. On the right-hand side is the Pearl. They're both at the same scales. And so if you put them together, this is what you actually get. These are actually at the same scales. You can kind of see, I mean, the mall property is large, and so when I talk about great transformation, look how many blocks. I mean, it's like four blocks by five blocks of the Pearl District that you can fit in this just this one corner of the mall area. So again, this is a thought exercise, just to kind of show people, actually, there's a lot of space there and a lot more things can happen. And as you can see, you know, the Pearl District, like this whole block is kind of an open space area, and this whole block is an open space area. So as you go taller and more dense, you know, those open space areas become really critical. And that's um, you know, definitely as we look at our regulations, it's something we're gonna be looking at to make sure as they densify, that we actually get the kind of public amenities that goes along with that kind of density.
Susan?
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Um so one thought I had, whether it's useful or not, um is uh you know, like the the feasibility of um residential with structured parking, it was fairly feasible within the current market.
Right.
And I'm kind of wondering if if uh you, if there is the possibility through the zoning or what have you to um sort of add additional parking, you know, like to replace additional um service parking with uh structured parking that is sort of like uh sharing public parking and private parking with the with the residential um multi-use structures, is that uh with something like that pencil?
Um I would say yes, and actually, honestly, when someone does mixed-use development, one of the things that we'd look at is um and how they would kind of analyze it. And this has something to do with our parking ratios, but also um, you know, the analysis that would go with the mixed-use development is that, you know, usually with residential, um people are using parking spaces um for residential uses at different times than people would be using it to uh go shopping or go to an office. And so usually those, because there's not a, generally not an overlap, which is not to say that there's, you know, it's not perfect. But we actually would allow um basically uh in a mixed-use development uh to not require kind of uh double the amount of parking because they could actually use the same parking space. So it's maximizing that parking space usage. Um and you can do that uh with mixed-use development a lot more easily than you can do that with single-use development. So it actually naturally goes hand in hand.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. So um when we worked with both TriMet and the mall, because again, we don't want to just start start drawing things on the mall property um without their awareness, again, just because it's such a large property, we're talking about over a hundred acres. Obviously, they have a big presence in this area, and like I said, they they have kind of the biggest potential for transformation. So we want to work with them and not at odds with them. And so this diagram is just really simple, but it's showing you in that um in the circle that is a dashed line, the lines inside that circle, the red, sorry, the red, the orange and the yellow dashed lines is kind of the network that we all agree to expect to see in the future. Because as you start densifying, street access, providing that kind of connectivity uh is really critical for supporting that kind of density that is pedestrian um friendly. And so there's actually general agreement from the mall that they expect to be building more streets and breaking down those big superblocks and those big vast parking spaces into smaller blocks that really does so much to support um kind of just a human-centric environment. So that's the kind of stuff that we'd be writing into our code now that we kind of have some general agreement about it. And then the other thing that we got really good agreement about with the TriMet and the mall is that right now, there's a single transit center on the mall property. And so it's it's this TC that has a an X through it. So that's where the Transit Center is. It's very to the north. Like I said, this is a hundred acres, so that Transit Center, you know, does not serve this area down here well at all. So that new Sears redevelopment, you know, it's pretty far from the Transit Center. And right now, the buses, basically, they come in and they go out. And I think actually, some of them go back out to Hall and some of them go out to Greenberg this way. But the buses don't go through the mall site. And so one of the things that we got a grievance on with both TriMet and the mall is that as they redeveloped, both of them are very interested in bringing transit to bringing buses through the mall property. And that's kind of shown here by this um bright blue line. So that it would better serve the entire property and hopefully, obviously, the surrounding neighborhood just so much better, as well as, you know, the employees that work there. So that was um awesome that we got that agreement um from them kind of upfront. And then the last thing I wanted to share, and this was uh to your question about, you know, uh them having to kind of come into compliance with new parking lot standards and green spaces and street trees and things like that. So we're identifying this as just a potential opportunity, and I cannot stress that enough. This is just potential. Uh what we learned in talking with the mall is that, and we didn't know this before, is that there is a fifty-year-old agreement between the mall and the cemetery. And for those of you who don't know, this green area in the middle is a private historic cemetery. Um obviously, it predates the mall. The mall wraps around it. Um and when the mall was being developed, um they entered into an agreement from fifty years ago that basically said this orange area here, that kind of wraps around the west and northern side of the cemetery, is a no-build area. So no, no buildings are allowed to be there, even though it's on the mall property. Um which is why that area, one of the reasons why that area is all surface parking lot. Um that's what was agreed to, and it's a pretty tight agreement. We had our city attorney look at it. Um but it did get us to thinking that um what we've heard that, you know, the cemetery would like is more of a buffer between them and the mall, and that's exactly why the cemetery actually negotiated for this no-build agreement. And so we think that there might be a potential to kind of have a triple win here. And again, I stress potential. This is a long shot. Um as the mall redevelops, especially as they redevelop up here, um they will have to actually provide stormwater management facilities that meet current standards. Um and current standards for uh detention facilities in particular take up a lot of space. Now, they can actually took those stormwater facilities and put them underground, which is very expensive. Or they can put them above ground, less expensive, but usually people don't do that because um it it takes up valuable land that could otherwise be developed. But in this case, especially this area right here on the northern edge, um they can't build there anyway. So we're thinking this might be a great location for an above-ground stormwater facility that could actually have lots of different kinds of benefits to the community. It could provide really, it could provide green space, habitat, pedestrian access, you know, that doesn't have a lot of car conflicts. It could actually do a lot in addition to managing stormwater, which is what they would be required to do, no matter what. And it'd also provide that additional buffer between the cemetery and the mall. So a lot of things have to fall into place for that to happen. It wouldn't happen anytime soon. Obviously, would ha, it would only happen when the mall was redeveloping this northern area. But it is something definitely worth talking about now, and we are talking about it with the mall as they kind of do their visioning for this area. So I just uh just wanted to let you know about that opportunity. Um it is kind of a long shot, but you know, you never know, and uh we're definitely wanting to keep our eye on the long game in this regard. So any questions about that? Okay, none. The last area, and sorry, this slide was mislabeled. This should be the the Nimbus Cascade area. Uh so this is community input we heard about the Nimbus Cascade area, which is on the west side of two seventeen, um straddled by the heavy rail line, um and then also Fano Creek on the very west-hand side. So um people definitely said they want better and safer Highway two seventeen crossings and access to the West Station. Um they think there are too many vacant buildings. They think it is a great regional location with easy access to the highway. Um and it's so unfortunate, the Fano Creek Trail is so close, but it just, people feel unsafe getting there without a car, um even though it's so close. So because of what we heard, um and also what we learned, which is that there actually is a strong market potential, uh both for new car dealerships in a very specific location, uh but also for smaller industrial uses. Um and these areas currently mostly don't allow even any kind of light industrial use. It's home to many small businesses, particularly over here um on the Nimbus side. There's a lot of small businesses in here, and so, you know, to the community's desire for more uh business diversity, you know, this is an area that we could actually support more um by, for example, allowing small industrial uses that um are compatible. So like that don't have like negative impacts like odor or vibration or noise. Um and there's lots of kinds of small industrial businesses that are like that, that we feel like if we we could actually better support, you know, kind of incubator spaces um over here if we kind of made our zoning code a little bit more flexible. Um and in terms of uh the Cascade area, this area over here between the two seventeen highway and the heavy rail, there's actually many vacant buildings um as indicated by the big Xs. So up here at the north, Orchard Supply and Toys R Us had been vacant for quite some time. And then down here, this is the former Sky High Sports um building, and that unfortunately, that business went belly up with COVID. So we have many vacant buildings. We also have many nonconforming uses in here. And we definitely have limited connected, limited connectivity because of all these barriers, two seventeen, the rail and Fano Creek. So because of what the community has been saying to us and because of all the kind of the constraints and the development pattern, one of the things that uh we are looking at is, you know, looking at adjusting our our zoning to better support small businesses, particularly in this blue area, the M U E two area. Um and to more focus on building form and, you know, um perhaps looking at allowing car dealerships up here in this location. That's where we've gotten a strong um desire from um businesses and the property owner up here. Um but we definitely, um you know, we recognize that this area up here is not really comfortable for pedestrians. But we definitely, you know, we recognize that this area up here is not really comfortable for pedestrians. Is is not necessarily going to change. It's the interchange with two seventeen and it's pretty hostile up there. So the idea is that perhaps letting car dealerships located in an area that is just not going to be a pedestrian oriented environment to begin with, but not necessarily give up on a pedestrian oriented environment down here at Greenberg Road. So those are kind of the key ideas there. And in terms of overcoming those barriers, we're definitely going to be developing questions and alternatives for the community to ask them what their preferences, what their priorities are with regard to the barriers that exist, particularly Highway two seventeen. So.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt just one second?
Of course.
So at the bottom of of this particular slide where it says Fano Creek Trail access right there.
Yep.
That is that green space right there, is that privately owned or city owned?
That is privately owned. So this green space right here?
Yes.
Yes, that's privately owned by an individual that actually owns other wetland areas, other property in the Metzger area. Yes, it's privately owned. And the city has not been successful in in working with that person for that to be a public space.
Okay, because it floods. I mean, it it's flooding all the time through there. And so I was just hoping that no one was considering that for build. Thank you.
Yeah, no, actually, this area is a wetland. Wetlands do flood. That's what they're supposed to do. That's exactly how they function to manage, you know, big stormwater events. And so, yeah, no, this area, you know, I think there's good potential maybe for trail access, but no, it would, it's not open for development because of the wetland that is there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Here's Jamie. Is it the same person who owns that property? Is the same person who owns the Ash Creek?
Yes, yes, same person.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So what I'm showing you on this slide is that the black dash line, this is actually an over crossing that would connect the mall over on this side of two seventeen. Basically fly over two seventeen, fly over the heavy rail and land at the end of Nimbus Street. That actually is a planned project. It's, it was one that was put on the books twenty years ago when the original planning for this area was done. It also was meant to go along with another project to extend Nimbus, Nimbus being up here, all the way down to Greenberg. So through that area we were just talking about, that project was dropped. And so we are now wanting to basically reevaluate. Does this super long bridge that would be super expensive, does it make sense anymore? You know, to connect the mall area to a dead end street, to this, you know, business park essentially. So we're asking, we're going to ask the community that question. We're looking at, is this a potential connection over two seventeen to connect the mall to the Cascade area? And then conversely, is this a connection that the community is interested in seeing that would kind of more connect the Metzger area across two seventeen, and again, we're talking ped bike connection through this area, either on slower, you know, more comfortable streets, or maybe through the Ash Creek corridor here, that would give them access, great access to the Tigerd Street Heritage Trail and a Fano Creek. So we're going to be developing that in a much clearer way than I'm showing you here. I'm also actually showing you here that there, you know, Bagan Park is going to be developed in the next two years. So here's a park just on the other side of two seventeen, you know, that these folks who are very park deficient on the other side of two seventeen, you know, can't easily get to except for going through the Greenberg Interchange, which if you've ever gone through the Greenberg Interchange on a bike or walking, it's not very comfortable at all. So we're going to be exploring, you know, what, where the community wants to get to and what their priorities are kind of going forward with our community engagement effort.
Hey, Susan.
Yep.
On the the Walk Bridge across two seventeen, I'm assuming there is also plans to either widen or do something with two seventeen, given all the growth we are expecting, et cetera. So so your feasibility of where we put the Walk Bridge probably takes that into consideration also. Am I correct?
Yes. So two seventeen actually is undergoing a widening of sorts. So are you guys at all familiar with the Highway two seventeen auxiliary lane project?
Yeah, that one we saw, I think, a year ago or something like that. We saw it here.
Yeah. So we're aware of that project and kind of, for example, where they're putting sound walls further actually like over here where this other red arrow is, they're putting some sound walls in there. So we're working definitely closely with ODOT to understand what they're doing with that project. And in terms of additional widening beyond that, you know, we're looking at their auxiliary, I have a difficult time saying that word, auxiliary lane project. We're making sure that any feasibility for any ped bike crossings takes that into consideration. But beyond that, I don't think there's any planned Highway two seventeen widening on the horizon that we would be taking into consideration. Obviously, as things move forward, new plans are made. But we would take into consideration what is known at the time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So just closing remarks, I just want to kind of give you a really big picture summary about all the different little choices that I just shared with you. And just to say that all the land use and transportation choices that we're looking at really involve lots of many small changes. There's no one overarching theme or big move here, again, because this area is highly developed. And there's not a lot of vacant properties. So this is not like a do over where there's a lot of vacant land or a lot of opportunity for great change, except for perhaps on the mall property. So what we're doing is doing lots of different little tweaks and moves and like prioritization exercises, rather than like, you know, do you want one, you know, one big thing to happen here? So it's all really sub area based kind of small changes. And then the other big move that we're making, at least that all the the research and the analysis we've done and the community engagement we've done, is that even though this whole area is zoned for mixed use, vertical dense development, we're not seeing that happen everywhere. And we don't expect it to happen everywhere. I mean, this area overall, including the portion of Beaverton, is a thousand acres. And the portion in Tigerd is about half of that. And so we don't, like, that's a lot of area to expect a lot of intense development out of. And yes, as planners, we need to aspire and plan for the future, but we also need to be pragmatic. So we feel like the last planning effort was very aspirational and perhaps maybe overshot just a little bit. And so we want to kind of right size it again and kind of really support where we expect to see that really dense vertical mixed use development and allow other areas to be more of what they are, to better support kind of the small businesses that they support, as well as the infill residential housing that they can support. So that's another kind of just big takeaway that we, lastly, that we just really want to focus on near term achievable and both market and community driven outcomes in this project. So when we do come with to get to you with a legislative package of recommendations, just expect that, that there's going to be lots of little things, and it's going to be a little tweak here and a little bit tweak there. And it's about kind of really just refining this area so it can, it can be a better version of itself than it is today. Our next step, I think I mentioned at the top of the hour, that we are going to be going out to the community very broadly. We're basically actively working on developing all those materials, refining those choices so that we're going to be going out to the community in March and April. And at that point, I'll probably give you an update. And and then that next step is that we'll be, you know, kind of producing our set of recommendations, going back to our stakeholder working group with those recommendations and all the public input that we've gotten, and then bringing those recommendations to you and then on the city council. And that'll happen in the summer and fall of this year. And that is it for me.
I have a quick question, if I may.
Of course.
I apologize. I I lost my connection briefly right when you were talking about this, so you may have already covered it. But back on the slide about the demand hierarchy for new development. I was just curious, the data that was used to to generate that, is there a sense for how long or short term the trends that influence that data are? I'm thinking, thinking back, it it looks exactly like the hierarchy I would expect to see during a pandemic, for instance.
Yes, really good question. I don't, I apologize. I'm I'm not the active expert, so these things don't stay in my brain, even though I've reviewed all the reports. I am confident in saying that, yes, there is years associated with kind of what, how those trends are expected to play out. But honest, and so I don't know those, that timeframe exactly. I can go back to those reports and get that for you. And by the way, all of our documentation and our analysis is available on the project website. But what I can say is that I do know that the trends are not based on COVID trends. Like COVID trends are still unfolding, and we're not even going to know the full import or have a full understanding of COVID trends in until later. I mean, we're seeing some of those trends unfold, but but the data that they used, just because they started doing this analysis, like literally as COVID, we went into lockdown. So I know that the data they used was pretty much pre COVID. So COVID just causes more uncertainty and disruption in kind of figuring out a way forward. But those trends were were not about COVID and the pandemic at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And actually, if I could just add a little bit onto that, what we're, what we're seeing and the reason why we're seeing it is be because of the other trends that have been played for the past ten to twenty years. So we're seeing, because of the changes in our transportation habits are, you know, just, you know, Uber and Lyft were not a thing twenty years ago. E-commerce and even like Amazon Prime, I remember looking it up. I think Amazon Prime came on the scene in two thousand and five. So a lot of the, like, kind of the changes in retail and even the changes in new office development, those, those changes started playing out, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago with changes in e-commerce. Suburban office development, even downtown office development, you know, downtown Portland definitely is, you know, they scooped up a lot of like the office demand, but COVID actually might reverse that trend a little bit. So we'll see about that. But yeah, so I'll leave it at that.
Good to know. Thank you.
Please, Susan?
Yeah.
Jamie, again, how, has anybody looked at the feasibility of live work type developments?
I'm trying to remember if we did, and if that's even like a category that they can kind of, because sometimes, you know, the consultants can only kind of do the analysis where there's data available. And off the top of my head, you know, I can't really remember, so I don't want to just make something up. I could look up that as well.
That's fine. Portland has, at least, I used to live in Goose Hollow and and both, there's a, some developments in that area that were live work, like a salon, you know, they live upstairs and there's a salon on the main floor or or a coffee shop or what have you. And live work, I I'm curious as to whether or not it's been successful, generally speaking, in Portland, if there's examples of that. And also, if you, if you want to encourage mom and pop type businesses, then, you know, that would be more likely to attract that sort of business than a, than a, say, a Starbucks would want to move in there. So it's just a thought. I'm curious if it, if it is successful where it's been done in in Portland.
Yeah, I can't speak a little bit to live work. So right now, I mean, live work is just generally constructed in a, in a, maybe a slight, like, there's maybe a slight difference in how it's constructed because generally maybe the, they're more connected as opposed to separate units, like a separate live unit from a separate work unit. But generally speaking, like, live work is allowed here now because this whole area is actually zoned for mixed use. And so live work from the outside, our code would treat it as mixed use. Because there's like a, an office or a retail component and then, or even a manufacturing component on the bottom story and then residential above. So that would be allowed now. So just in terms of, that's how our code would can treat it. And and we're not seeing that. We're not seeing mixed use come out of the ground here. One of the things that we want to explore with the community is, should we actually help facilitate, particularly on the mall property, help like facilitate or actively support more mixed use development? Because it does kind of fall into a different kind of financing world than single use development. And so we do want to explore if the community thinks it's important for us to try to help that kind of development along because it's not happening necessarily by itself.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? I should unshare my screen so I could see you guys again. Whoops. Oh, how do I? There we go. Hello again.
Hello.
Hello. Sorry, I'm like a disembodied voice. It's one thing I miss about being in person. I can't see you and talk at the same time.
I know. And sometimes you feel like you're talking to yourself when you can't see anybody else.
I know. I'm just gesturing over here.
Well, thank you, Susan, so much for your presentation, and we look forward to working with you again later this year when you come back to us. So let's move on to the next briefing. It's on River Terrace two point O, and it will be presented by Senior Transportation Planner Skylar Warren. Hi, Skylar.
Hello, President Hu, Commissioners. I'm Skylar Warren. I'm actually a senior planner, no transportation in there. Although, as you'll see, we we do consider transportation in the planning work that we do, long range. I, like Susan, am working mainly on our long range planning projects. And some of you have had at least one briefing on the River Terrace Concept Planning Pro- Project. Tonight, I'm going to be providing an update on that. But I will go back in time a little bit here, right at the beginning, just to get everyone kind of acquainted with the area again. And so won't spend a lot of time on that. But like Susan, anytime you have questions, you know, this is an informal briefing, feel free to interrupt me. So with that, I'm just going to jump straight in here and hopefully this screen sharing will work. Yes. All right. So just to get everyone acquainted here, what what's the area that we're talking about in in River Terrace? And I will also say that anytime you're starting to do a briefing on one of these projects, they're, they're they're massive undertakings and there are multiple avenues into it. And I kind of debated different ways that I could start to present material or what should come first or what should come later in the hierarchy. So I chose this way geographic acquaintance first, but, you know, there's some other things that I think are just as important. We're just going to cover them later. So we're talking about two areas down in this kind of general vicinity. And, you know, here's Tigerd. We've got a better map here. So this map is our story map that we have up online. It's actually a fantastic visual aid for these types of meetings in a virtual environment because it does allow me to kind of easily navigate back and forth and show you a lot of information quickly. So Tigerd is represented here by the light blue colors. You can see our neighboring cities here of Beaverton, that large city there to the north in pink. And then to our south, King City here. So if you're familiar with the current River Terrace, River Terrace two point O is adjacent to that on either the the west in one case or the south in the other. So the light blue here is actually the current River Terrace, which is part of the city of Tigerd. So what exactly are River Terrace west and south? Well, right now, they're not part of the city of Tigerd. They're not even inside the urban growth boundary for the region. They're what's known as urban reserves areas. And these are lands that are set aside by Metro in a planning process they did about a decade ago to be used for eventual urban development. And they are in contrast to areas that we call rural. And they are in contrast to areas that we call rural reserves, which at least in the coming 30 to 40 to 50 years are not intended to be open for development. They cannot be brought into the urban growth boundary. They can't be brought into urban levels of service. So also worth noting that, you know, that the urban reserves here are noted in blue with the hatching. And the rural reserves are in green. There are a couple of areas that are kind of in limbo, and those are undesigned areas. And I won't get into exactly why they were left that way, because I don't actually fully understand myself. I have some thoughts maybe on it, but regardless, they essentially work as rural reserves. They're at least under the current scheme, not eligible to be brought in to the urban growth boundary and developed for urban purposes. Another thing that it's important to, to point out to you all is that River Terrace South here is bordered on, on its south across Beef Bend Road by what's known as King City West. Now, this is a, a former urban reserve that was concept planned by King City and was approved by Metro to be added to the urban growth boundary in the last cycle, which was about three years ago. And so King City is currently doing what's called a community plan for this, and that's the sort of next stage of planning for this area. So it's important for us to coordinate with them, but it also highlights the, why River Terrace South is so important to be considering right now to be brought into the urban growth boundary. As you can see, River Terrace and King City West are separated by this area. Now, if we left this area outside the urban growth boundary, when King City wants to connect to sanitary sewer out here or to the water system, they get their water from the Tigered Water District. They wouldn't be able to, to put infrastructure in that urban reserve area without a statewide goal exception, which is its own process. It's pretty difficult to do. So in order to ease that and knowing that it's much more efficient for the city to coordinate its planning of infrastructure with our, our neighbors, the city council opted to go ahead and start content planning for both these areas, but to bring River Terrace South in with the mid-cycle application. In terms of the environment out here, we don't have the topography noted on here, but you can, if you're familiar with reading topo maps, you can really kind of read where the hillside is. Because, you know, Bull Mountain is in this area, and as you can see, the streams are generally flowing away from it in every direction. So, you know, the Tuolton River is running along here. This is kind of double deck line. You can see there's a number of streams that feed into it. In the River Terrace South area, this area is pretty relatively flat, pretty easy to develop. But of course, what that means is there's more wetlands. And then the area of River Terrace West, these stream channels actually are in areas where there are more steep slopes. So you don't end up with as many wetlands, but it becomes more challenging to build in those areas due to the topography. And then one other thing to note, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but it is worth noting that there is a lot of existing infrastructure in the area, including the existing trails, like the Powerline Trail. There are the trails that run along River Terrace Boulevard in, in stages of partial completeness, completion. And we've also got some existing parks and then some areas that are designated as future park areas. One to note is the property down here. This is owned by the city, was purchased with Parks Acquisition Funds. And unfortunately, it's actually in one of those undesigned areas, so not eligible yet to be developed. And just to the south of that is the Tuolton River Wildlife Refuge. So I just wanted to give you that little bit of information there, and I'll jump into the present, presentation portion of this. Oh, what exactly it is that we're doing here? What is a concept plan? Well, when we have raw land like this, raw land that is, you know, being used for agriculture or low-impact purposes, and we want to get it to the stage of urbanized development, there's several steps that we need to go through. The first is developing a concept plan. And that's what this project is. It's a very high-level look at what are the goals, the aspirations, the vision for this area? And how in a really kind of rough sense can we start to piece together the lay of the land to meet that vision, goals and aspirations? And then under the Metro UGB Expansion System, we actually take the concept plan to Metro and we say, we would like to bring this area in and here's our idea of how this will develop. And we show that it meets the standards and the criteria for bringing it into the urban growth boundary. And Metro either says yes or no. Presuming they say yes, we then move on to the community plan stage. And that is a plan that is more detailed, but derives its direction from the concept plan. And then, of course, once the community plan has been adopted and we've adopted zoning for the area and, and regulations that, and, and code that governs how we're going to administer the development of these lands, then developers themselves will come in and through the plan development process, which you all are largely familiar with, they will start to fill in even more of those details. And of course, you know, the development process itself will then result in urbanized land. So when we're doing this kind of project, especially when it's, you know, so vision-intensive, we want to make sure that we're engaging the community early and we're engaging them often. And to that end, we've made great efforts to try to reach people wherever we can. Unfortunately, right now, wherever we can is online, which is not our usual method of doing community engagement. And so we've had to adapt, but I think we've been pretty successful in doing that. So I'm going to run through some of the things that we've done here. First, we put out a survey asking the community what makes a great neighborhood. And the idea there was actually to do a few things. We wanted to learn about, you know, what kind of neighborhood people wanted to live in without asking them specifically about River Terrace, because we didn't want to get preconceived notions about what kind of development happens in greenfields at the edge of the city. And we were also trying to get some early feedback on our transportation system plan, which is a concurrent project with this one, as well as our commercial and industrial project called Tigered Made, which I believe you've had a recent briefing on as well. So we asked questions about housing, transportation and commerce, just in a general sense. Like, what kind of things do you value in a neighborhood? And we got 135 respondents to that, and it was pretty enlightening, the information that we got back. And I'll go over some of it in a bit. We also have a community advisory committee that's made up of 12 members, and we've got two members of that CAC with us here tonight, commissioners who are serving, and that group has now met three times. And those meetings are all held in two languages, English and Spanish, and we have three members who prefer to converse in Spanish. And this is a stray bullet point. Whoops. We also had some open office hours, so that's just time that I'm available for the community to come sign up for time to just ask me anything. You know, really, there's no format to it. It really is just a community-guided event. We've held three of those, one hour each. We've had a total of 15 participants. And those have been really productive as well. I would say most of those have been attended by people who are property owners in and around the area of the urban reserves. So it's been a great forum to be able to interact with them as well. And then we just closed. Oh, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. I think Jamie had a question.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I cannot see hands, so just go ahead and interrupt me if you can get an word in edgewise.
It's okay. I, I, I think I did, I tried earlier and I, I don't know if you heard me. Um, I just had a quick question about whether or not landslides are going to be an issue in the, in the particular reserve area that we're looking at.
Well, I mean, that's a question that I probably couldn't answer.
That, that's, that's fine. I, I was just curious if, if, if that's a general issue in the steeper areas in our, in our area or rather than, you know, you having a geotech report on this particular stretch of property.
So what I, what I can say, you know, landslides are kind of dependent on two things, soil type and topography. And so from what I understand about the soil types out here, they are prone to erosion. I don't know how that correlates really with landslides. But certainly, in the River Terrace South area, I, I probably wouldn't expect to see that. In the River Terrace West area, you might, you know, might be more prone just due to the steepness of some of those slopes. However, the counter that I'll offer to that is, that is why we have regulations around sensitive lands, why we regulate building in steep, on steep slopes, why we require vegetated corridors around streams, because the best way to prevent a stream from eroding and causing a landslide is just making sure that there's vegetation around it and roots to hold the soil in place. So in that sense, you know, I, I haven't heard any concerns from our consultant team. But that is something like the geotech level of analysis would probably be more likely looked at on a development-by-development basis. So that sort of last stage, we sort of, I guess, look at it in a sort of really gross sense, right? And, and I don't think what I've heard back so far has indicated that there's major issues, although we do know that the streams in the River Terrace South area are pretty deeply incised. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we also held a public open house. And that just closed on the 25th of January. It was open for three, well, just over three weeks. And in that public open house, we presented the preferred alternatives that the design team had come up with for the concept plans. And we sent postcards out to 27,000 households announcing that, put out an ad in Tigered Life. We got 122 respondents, which is pretty good. So as a result of the community feedback that we got from the Community Advisory Committee and from some of those online events, we have an updated project vision. And a lot of these slides you'll see are also in two languages. Where I can, I try to preserve those two languages so that for the public record, if someone comes back in the future and wants to look at this briefing, they need the Spanish-language version. They can at least see some portions of the presentation in that language. So with the help specifically of the CAC, a little bit from the, the the survey and the public open house, but mainly the CAC, we honed in on a couple of things, the focus statement and the vision statement. So the focus statement kind of sits above it all and it basically says that our work here is going to be focused through two lenses that are centrally linked, and those are equity and climate change. We consider them as lenses in a pair of glasses through which the work is conducted and viewed. And like a pair of glasses, they guide the vision of the project. So as such, this project seeks to send the voices of communities of color, immigrants and people with low incomes. These communities are among those most affected by the impacts of environmental inequities, climate change and systemic racism. When we meet the needs of the most vulnerable communities, the health and wellbeing of all community members improves. And that's partially derived from the city's adopted strategic plan refresh. And so that leads us then to our vision statement for the project. And again, I'll, I'll sort of read this to you. River Terrace 2.0 is a neighborhood for everyone and a complete community. It offers housing opportunities to the full diversity of Tigered's families and households. This community is made complete by providing space for small businesses and a thriving local economy, a variety of housing options and accessible parks and open spaces. The transportation system treats all modes equally with walking and biking trails throughout the community, a road system that emphasizes safety and regional access, and a development pattern that supports an efficient public transit system. Public spaces and parks offer places for the community to gather. Natural areas are protected and enhanced to emphasize habitats and scenic views. Public utilities are designed to maximize cost efficiency and long-term fiscal sustainability. The costs of necessary infrastructure are shared in an equitable manner. And this vision statement really does flow through the rest of the project. So a lot of what you're going to be seeing here tonight is influenced by that vision statement built in, in collaboration with our Community Advisory Committee. So from that, and those are both public-facing sort of statements. From them, the project team developed some guiding principles, and these are not, they're not hidden from the public, but they're not really published. They're really kind of our reminders of how we apply these things. So in the area of neighborhoods and housing, we're looking at providing a diversity of housing choices that will serve the full range of housing needs. We want to make sure that we integrate opportunities for market rate and for regulated affordable housing to facilitate homeownership at all income levels. We want to make sure that the neighborhoods are designed to thoughtfully incorporate adjacent natural areas and commercial centers. We want to make sure that neighborhoods are designed to provide opportunity for an average of 20 households per acre. We want to make sure that the transportation system emphasizes pedestrian and bicycle connections within the neighborhood and outside the neighborhood to regional trails. We want to make sure that the streets are designed for safety and serve all modes of transportation, including those vehicles, the pedestrians and bicycles, as well as transit. We want to make sure that the transportation system connects to the regional facilities and extends the existing streets and trails where feasible and economically viable. In terms of commercial areas, we want to make sure they provide opportunities for business and employment to serve River Terrace residents, and that's an important note. It's not just about a place where you can go buy dinner. It's also It's not just about a place where you can go buy dinner. It's also a place where you can perhaps go work. We want to make sure that residents can acquire many of the goods and services they need to meet their daily needs without having to travel long distances. We want to make sure that community and neighborhood parks are distributed throughout the area to make sure that there's a full range of gathering and recreating options. We want to make sure that they're accessible and connected to the commercial centers and neighborhoods by trails. We want to make sure that they're emphasizing natural features such as views and tree groves. And then we want to protect the natural resources to the maximum extent practicable. We want to make sure that habitat corridors are maintained to support wildlife ranging and migration patterns. That's especially important, given that we do have a wildlife refuge in the area as well as the stream corridor connections down to the Twalton River, which is also an important wildlife corridor. So when we were talking to the community in that survey, we asked, you know, like I said, a variety of questions about housing, transportation and commercial areas. And I'm just going to run through a few kind of take home messages here that I think are really important. Two things we heard about housing, fully sixty-three percent of the respondents agreed with the statement that Tiger needs greater variety of housing in terms of both types and prices. And sixty percent of respondents said that lack of affordable housing is an important issue in Tiger. When they were asked, you know, do you agree or disagree with the statement that young families can find housing? They can afford in Tiger. Nearly fifty percent said that young families cannot find housing. They can afford in Tiger. Same with single people. More than fifty percent said that single people have trouble finding housing they can afford in Tiger. So what we're hearing is a refrain that housing is an issue. We have an issue of housing size and price points, and especially for those smaller households. When we asked what factors make it the most difficult to find housing in Tiger, number one rising to the top, you know, seventy-five percent of people said that cost, followed by not enough housing for sale. So I mean, that again is telling us that we need more housing. We need a greater variety of housing. Interesting to note of our respondents to that first survey, fully ninety-three percent were homeowners themselves. So imagine what the survey results would have looked like with a higher renter percentage. I'm imagining that some of those responses would have been even more stark in the favor of more needed housing. So when asking people about, you know, where they want to live, what's important to them? The most important thing to them is safe streets and sidewalks, which was kind of an interesting result, because there are a lot of things on here that I think we thought that would rise to the top. But I think it is really a reflection that Tiger residents do expect to have a walkable community. And, you know, it's certainly in line with the city's vision to be a walkable community. And I'll apologize, these last two charts are a little hard to read because of the way they exported from our survey software. But when we asked people which of the following would encourage you to use public transit more often, the two responses that rose to the top were stops in commercial areas where I can access goods and services on my way to and from my home and stops closer to my home. So in other words, people want public transit where there are destinations, either, you know, destinations they can stop on their walk home from the transit stop or their home itself. And then when we asked them what types of businesses and jobs they would like to see in their neighborhood, this one's a little hard to read, but I think what's important is that there are certain types of businesses that we're being told are more neighborhood friendly. And that's going to be things like the dine-in restaurants, coffee shops and takeout restaurants, and small food, small non-food retail shops. And then also personal services and some people, surprisingly, even a gas station. So the key ideas that we took from this is obviously the demand for a more affordable housing and variety. Residents want to be able to acquire goods and services without having to travel long distances. They want safe, slow streets, walkability and destinations, and the transit needs to be neighborhood scale. In terms of economy, local businesses are desired. We've heard from our Community Advisory Committee that there's a strong need for a grocery store in the River Terrace area. Commercial areas need to be neighborhood scale, pedestrian friendly. And we've heard resoundingly that large surface parking, parking lots are not desired. So taking all of the information that we've gleaned from that community engagement, the project design team made up of myself and a number of consultants who were working with the city came up with three preliminary concepts. And I'm going to run through them really fast. There's a lot of information here, but I want to make sure that, you know, we can get to the kind of critical thing at the end, which is our preferred alternative. So I'm actually going to skip some of the slides in the interest of time, but if something catches your eye, I'll pause after each one. Let me know and I can run back and, and answer it or, or comment on it. So the first concept that we developed was based on the idea of a more conventional suburban fringe development where you might have a strip shopping center that's larger format. It has anchor stores, surface parking lots, a lot of retail in a really small area with some multifamily housing kind of gathered around it, apartments. And then I, I sort of transitioned down to smaller form housing at the edges next to the natural areas. And, you know, you're looking at, you know, again, these higher density, larger form housing types near the shopping center. The shopping centers, yeah, they're going to have parking lots, strip center type retail. And you would still have, you know, the, a transportation system that supports all modes, but you'd be more likely to have a transportation system that favored cars for entering and leaving the shopping center, serving more regional traffic. And then the neighborhood access into the shopping areas would be using trail systems that bring you into the rear of the commercial areas. Concept, I'll pause there if there's any questions on concept A. Concept B is more of a Main Street approach, and we're kind of calling this the trolley stop concept. So this would be the one that you might see in older neighborhoods in and around the Northwest that were served by trolleys where around the trolley stop, you might have a smaller retail establishment and maybe some restaurants. But the commercial area only goes back as deep as one building. The parking, if there's, if there's surface parking is in the rear and the rest of the parking is accommodated on the street. And in terms of housing, this one would have a much more evenly distributed mixture of housing types. So you kind of don't end up with the super large form, high density apartments, but you also don't end up with lower density edge development. Everything sort of is in a middle state and it's very varied from block to block, right? So you might have a block that has some duplexes and triplexes on it and a block over you have courtyard units and a block over that. And that you might have cottage clusters with some quads on the corners, that kind of thing, with some single detached houses on blocks kind of around it. So it really is mixing it up with the idea being that, you know, those young families and single people, seniors who want a smaller home, they're integrated with the rest of the neighborhood with people who might need a larger home with a larger yard and they have children. So it's more economically integrated, more age integrated. And more family size integrated. So the commercial activity and character in this scenario, the pedestrians and the bicyclists are sharing the street with the vehicles as well as on-street parking. It's a little bit more of that Main Street stroll kind of experience, walking from shop to shop. And there are, there would be off-street paths for pedestrians and bicycles to connect at the end of the Main Street into the park system. And concept C unfortunately did not get the slide switched out. So this one is more lop off the two ends of this Main Street concept and you end up with just an interior small commercial development. So it still has that neighborhood feel, but it's just much smaller in scale and you don't end up with that large kind of unbroken stretch of the, the retail experience. This one goes back to that shift in the relative form and size of housing from the commercial area down to the edges. In this case, the largest housing is at the center and it's most likely to take the form of midsize apartments that are, you know, stacked two to three stories tall. And then you're going to move out to quadplexes, single story courtyards. I'm transitioning eventually out to single detached houses, duplexes and cottages at the fringe. And commercial activity is very subdued. You might have one small interior convenience store, some live workspaces, small scale neighborhood services like barber salons, maybe some small medical offices, that kind of thing. But a big emphasis on the opportunity for things like pop-up and seasonal markets as an opportunity to kind of activate that center. The transit service would be most likely internal only, serving point-to-point in those areas. The trailheads are built into the neighborhood with off-street trails and sidewalks connecting the center to the natural edges. And the commercial activity would not generate much out-of-area traffic with most workers and patrons of the area coming from within the neighborhood. So this one, it's important to note, is heavily dependent on sort of a critical level of density to, to be supported. So what we heard, and actually I'll pause there to see if there's any questions about any of those.
Yes, I have a quick question. What do people like? And, and I'm coming at this from two different angles. The heterogeneity of opportunity, of option B, where you have a real mix of things next to each other. Do people like that? Or do they like living in an area where for a few blocks around the houses are all the same? And coming at it from another direction is if we look at what we have today, which Mesa to me seems a little bit more like option A. Is that because people have liked that and it's evolved that way? Or is it because it's been planned that way, whether they like it or not? Does that make sense?
Yeah. So I'll tackle the second question first.
Sure.
The reason it looks like that is a combination of regulation and market specialization, we'll call it. So, you know, the short story is that a lot of that housing mix that we're talking about was outlawed, you know, fifty to seventy-five years ago, depending on the community. You know, when zoning laws came into being, it was really about separating uses and separating different modes of living even. So you had your commercial area here and you had your industrial area here and you had your high-density housing here and you had your low-density housing here. And to be quite frank with you, you know, the, the commercial and industrial separation from residential areas, that was largely a product of the need to address some of the ills of like urban living back at, in the early industrial era. I mean, there were some real health concerns with people living next to these areas.
Sure. Residential power and bell roads and that stuff. Yeah.
The residential segregation, to be quite honest, has at its roots segregation. Right? So a lot of the ex, you know, exclusionary zoning of housing was intended to keep minority communities in one area and to keep largely white communities in another area. And, you know, I'm not going to say that, you know, every single, you know, exclusionary zoning housing ordinance was always coming at it from that angle, right? I think over time, people maybe forgot that or, you know, that they had good intentions. But it is, I think, really important that we acknowledge in the planning realm that that was intent and it's been documented that it was intent for some amount of time. And so in essence, we don't have a lot of information about how people want to live. To get to the first part of your question, because we haven't allowed it, right?
But it makes a lot of sense. It's an experiment. We'll find out.
Well, you know, I think the experiment's already been done because we have a lot of neighborhoods that were built prior to the implementation of zoning across the country, which really only kind of came into being in the nineteen twenties, right? That was the model zoning I figured what it was. It was like a model zoning code that was published by the Department of Commerce. But, you know, in the, in the decades following that, community started adopting zoning. But prior to that, you know, it was kind of a free-for-all, I mean, in some sense. And that's where you see a lot of the older neighborhoods in places like Salem or Ashland or Eugene or Portland coming into being. And if you look at some of the top dollar neighborhoods in Portland, the ones that people are clamoring to get into, you know, like Laurelhurst, Lads Edition, Irvington, what these neighborhoods have in common is, well, some of them were built with exclusionary zoning as part of their kind of plan. But surrounding them is this great mix of other types of uses like courtyard units, cottage clusters, duplexes, triplexes, quads. So, and, and that mix has not diminished the value of those neighborhoods. So I guess I would posit that actually people do want a variety of housing. You know, if you have an older relative that wants to live separately from you, but you want to have them nearby, it's nice to be able to walk to their home. And an older relative may not want the three thousand square foot home that might be built in a, in a more exclusionary neighborhood. So hopefully that kind of addressed that a little bit. I could probably talk.
Hugely. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Hugely, yes, thank you. Thank you. Briefly, can I, real briefly, just to say, we're also seeing it in the market demand right now. We're working with the folks, Taylor Morrison, who's developing River Terrace right now, current River Terrace. And they are changing several portions of their planned developments. This may be coming to you at some point soon, from fairly large detached, single-dwelling houses to a whole bunch of more attached. We're calling them ADUs under our code. Traditionally, you'd look at them and call them duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. And that's because they have a market that's asking for that, and that's mostly because of price point.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, it's Jamie Watson, Tyler, again. I just wanted to add pets. You know, on the, on the option B sort of design, you know, for single people or small families that want to have pets, but that can't necessarily afford a freestanding lot, you know, just being able to let your pets out, it's kind of a big, that's a big deal. And I also wanted to pose the question of how does, how does like your neighborhood grocery store sort of integrate into these archetypes that you're creating?
Yeah, so the grocery store, I mean, ultimately, the market will decide what kind of grocery store can go in here, right? We sort of create the right conditions that we think a grocery store would need. The, the concept A is really kind of built around the idea that a larger format grocery store would come in. We, you know, there's, it's debatable based on the early commercial market analysis, whether we could even get that. I think a lot revolves around what happens in other areas as they develop. King City, for example, which is a little ahead of us, South Cooper Mountain. And it's important to note that commercial is always kind of the last thing to develop in these neighborhoods, because they want to have the sort of captive audience, I guess, nearby. In the Main Street option, we actually envisioned that it would either be sort of the larger format store that's at the arterial or a more neighborhood-scale store that's maybe just off of the arterial. And then in the concept C, you know, you're really talking about just convenience store there. It really is like a neighborhood bread, milk, pet food kind of thing. It's, you're probably not likely to be able to support that kind of larger commercial operation.
Are, are smaller grocery stores generally more difficult to accommodate? Or, you know, cancel out feasibility-wise for developers? Or then, say, your Winco's and your Redmire's and?
You know, I don't really know. I mean, it's something our commercial market analysis team is looking at. I mean, you know, the, the nice thing is the smaller store can go into any retail frontage. Whereas the larger stores, they have to do kind of a build-to-suit approach, right? Because they want the big coolers and they want like the loading dock to be this certain way. So in terms of flexibility, you know, the, the smaller scale stuff can kind of go anywhere, but again, they're going to follow the market and, you know.
Still looking at them.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So. Oh, I was going to say, I had a quick comment. This is Commissioner Quinones, and I loved, I participated in the survey. I love seeing this, this was wonderful. And I think going back to Commissioner Roberts' question and pulling from that survey data with the smaller homes, you can look at, you know, if you're looking at younger families and you're looking at single individuals, that those mixed, it, it, that data caters to the mixed use, you know, what Tom was saying, also like the duplexes and triplexes. So you can almost like have that inference, it is there, that, that data is there. So I would say maybe do, you know, more qualitative analysis on that versus just the quantitative. But great job on that. And the other thing is, is that with where River Terrace is located in terms of looking at grocery stores, there's great farming communities there. And if there's a space that you can have for like farmers markets to have within that neighborhood, I think that would be phenomenal when you're looking at some of the local businesses that are there and fill a need for fresh foods. So you're not having a food desert in that area. And it would be a great kind of temporary focus until you can get those larger stores in there while you're building up. Those are my comments.
Yeah, thanks for those, those are great comments. We, our team has been looking pretty closely, based on the feedback from our community advisory committee, at the concept of urban plazas and how they fit into this concept plan. Because the more traditional approach to parks in these types of areas is the, you know, sort of green space, maybe some fields, maybe it's a trail along a stream. But I'd say it's, we see less often the type of urban plaza park that you would see in a downtown. And actually, what we heard from our community advisory committee is they wanted more of those kind of urban feeling community gathering spaces. And it actually aligns well with the intent to open the community up to the, to the possibility for things like a farmer's market or a night market or a weekend market. We want to make sure that there are those spaces that can be kind of programmed and activated, but are still tied into the commercial area, right? So that they can reflect and sort of augment each other. So I appreciate those comments. I'm going to run really quick through our preferred alternative that's in its very early development stages. So what we heard from people is that they didn't like concept A. So those of you who are not fond of it, you are in good company. And then beyond that, we heard pretty resoundingly from this community advisory committee that B was preferred. But from the public open house, it ended up being a little bit more split between B and C. And so what we learned from that is there's probably a desire for some combination of those things. And so the design team has really kind of been looking at those opportunities. The other thing is that, you know, we need this this area to be sort of fiscally self-sufficient as much as possible. And that requires larger employment areas. And based on the need for a larger format grocery store out here that we were hearing, the preferred concept actually kind of blends all three of the commercial approaches with the housing approach of concept B, that mixed housing approach. So in general, there's a commercial and employment center in River Terrace West along Shoals Ferry Road. And I'll show some more zoomed-in versions of this here in a second. All the neighborhoods, commercial areas are organized around a Main Street corridor. It's just that the difference is, is it more internally focused or more externally focused? The Main Street balances livability and that internal focus with the external connections and access. We've left flexibility for a future north-south collector road that you can kind of see here. This is this black line, so this would be the collector sort of akin to, oh, well, you can see it even better here, River Terrace Boulevard, if you're familiar with that, and River Terrace One. And we've also left it open that should the county pursue its project to extend Tile Flat Road, and that's kind of happening off map to the west here. This option leaves open the possibility of making that connection come in here with a roundabout connection. All neighborhoods achieve an average of twenty units per net acre. The connection at Beef Bend reflects and connects with the town center and the King City concept plan. So the western end of West King